Okay, thank you Chairman and Commissioners. We've got a couple of items of business we're going to take care of today. First is continuing with the discussion from last Monday as it relates to funding formula for fire departments. At last Monday's meeting, we were asked to run another scenario, so we have run that. We're going to present those results to you, answer any questions, and hopefully get a definitive answer from you all today because, to be perfectly honest, we are running out of time with respect to budget development. The second piece of the work session is going to be just a global overview of revenue and expenditures. You'll get a much deeper dive on your May 2 work session where we go into a lot more detail, but it's to at least lay that foundation for you before we go into additional information on your May 2. And then the last item, at your last board meeting, we removed the fire range item. We will be asking you to take action on that today as well. It's the same action that was put before you last Monday, and we have provided a copy of that agenda abstract to you. So those are three items of business, and we have to get done by 9:30-ish in order for us to be at the groundbreaking at 10 o'clock. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Gates.
Good morning. A little out of practice from these early morning meetings because I've gotten the habit originally when I first got here, when we stopped having this.
Well, it's that Chairman who had.
As Cindy mentioned-
Hold on, two hours late, that's quick.
As Cindy mentioned, we're going to talk today, come back to the fire funding discussion from last Monday, the information that was requested. We're trying to receive definitive final direction concerning the funding model because, as Cindy mentioned, we're kind of the point at this stage where we need to make a decision as to which way we're going because the budget development and the time required to do, go down a path to ensure that all the numbers are tied down and accurate for the budget. So that Cindy, as she mentioned, will put forward in next week her initial proposed budget, which will exclude the schools, and then by June 1, obviously, we have to include the schools. So it's going to be a whirlwind between here and pretty much the end of June and even into the summer with the bottom discussion. We're also going to review a little bit of revenue. What you're going to see today is kind of real high level discussion about how revenue works in the county. We're not really talking about trends, but kind of what it makes up and how it works. A high level review of expenditures, kind of where our money goes, and then a review of capital funding. On Monday of next week during that work session, I'll actually get into the proposed budget for FY '17 and talking about specifically what changed, what increased, what decreased, and kind of what the recommendation is going to be going forward for the county. But today, I just wanted to kind of lay the foundation for you and take us back to, I call this a little bit of a primer, because this kind of takes us back to kind of here's where all of our revenue sources are, here are the areas where you have some decision making, here is some dedicated revenue, that kind of thing. So I think it's a good discussion, helps lay out some initial foundational work for the public. I know we've had, we've got some commissioners, since I've done this high level review a while ago, we've gotten some new commissioners that may benefit from having that discussion as well as the public. So kind of jumping right back into it, our discussion from Monday left us with the request to add one option, we called it option five, our new district option, and what the request was to look at what you, how you would form a fifth, I'm sorry, a sixth tax district encompassing all of the remaining fire feed districts excluding Monroe, and then leaving the five that are in place in place. And I thought it'd be important to kind of start with the discussion of what does it take to form a fire service tax district? And I don't think we have anybody on the board from the last time we did one, is that? Because that's been a while, several, several, several years.
I was on the board when I informed my process.
Did you probably Mineral Springs or Waxaw or Wesley Chapel maybe?
Waxaw, what? Yeah, there was a period of support. Was it Chapel?
Keep in mind, this is a fire service district. This isn't the Chapter 69 version. This is the voted by you, the board, not by the residents. The first thing you would do is receive a resolution agreeing to the fire service districts from municipalities with territory, excuse me, I'm sorry, Jeff, did you say something? With municipalities and the territory of the district, and then you would prepare a detailed report, and it's our interpretation that this would need to be done about four weeks prior to the public hearings, and that report would need to include a map of the district, the residents, the appraisal value of all the property, the present county municipal and special tax districts that are in that area, because you can have special tax districts for other issues besides fire, the ability of the district to sustain the additional taxes necessary to provide that service, and then a plan for providing the service. So it's, our thinking that before you've been held to a public hearing, all of this information needs to be out within four weeks ahead of that. Provide notice of the public, of the public hearing mailed to everyone within that district four weeks prior to that and publish the notice, which is pretty standard about one week ahead of time. From that, the B O C C must find first that there's demonstrable, demonstrable need for fire service in the district, that it's impossible or impractical to provide those services on a countywide basis, it's economically feasible to provide those services without a reasonable burden, that there's a demand for those services by the persons residing in the district. You must hold, then hold a public hearing with the resolution establishing the service district, and then the service district will take effect at the beginning of the fiscal year, beginning after the passage of the resolution. So if you were to pass that anytime after July 1st, at this point, this last step, or I'm sorry, step five, which keep in mind is four weeks after you publish the report, that would not take effect until the following tax year. So for instance, July 1 is the start of our year that's coming up, so it'd probably be, if you were going to establish a new district, would be June 1, 2017, take effect the 17, '18 fiscal year. And I want to point out one thing that I thought probably bears on this conversation because if you go all the way back to the very beginning, they receive the resolutions agreeing to the service district. Part of the discussion that Jeff and I had specifically is if a municipal territory opts out, what kind of happens? And in effect, it would leave you with a donut hole where your service, the, none of the tax district dollars, keep in mind, we're talking about tax districts, could be spent inside of that donut hole to provide fire service. So wherever that leave out existed, there would either need to be a municipal contract with funding coming from the municipal government that resides there, or no service provided by that fire department within that municipal boundary, which is kind of an important point. I think Wingate's in the town, Wingate, I'm not, sorry, yeah, Wingate's in, Wingate and is Unionville in the corporate moments of Unionville, I believe. So without those, there would be this interesting, or not interesting, but this would be kind of a challenge to establish that separation because you'd have to prove out that the fire taxes aren't being, aren't supplementing or supporting the municipal side of that equation. And right now, we have that on a very limited basis with Weddington and Wesley Chapel, but if you had it more widespread or if those towns particularly voted against the tax, then you would have, they would have to provide that service within their municipal borders. So I think, I thought that was an important perspective. And then also in addition, that when, anytime a municipality would opt out, what that would do is change the global rate for everyone in that district because you would lose the value within that municipal border as far as your tax rate goes. So there's, there's some nuances to that, and I think this is, this is meant to be a methodical process, so trying to rush it through and kind of put it together for July 1 of this year, I don't think it's feasible to get it right, and probably not feasible just practically to get it through. But I just wanted to lay out kind of those options and to point out, the option two that we're talking about doesn't require any additional, any additional changes outside of your budget process that you have now. And essentially what it would entail is setting all your existing fire fees to zero and just implementing the countywide tax. Are there any questions on the steps to establish the district before we move on to kind of what the analysis looks like? I'm sorry, we don't normally take questions from the audience. I realize you're new.
You know, one thing I don't understand, the four options we talked about the other day, they've been on the table since last November. What I don't understand is why we didn't, and another statement concerns me is that it was stated that two of the four options required talking to those municipalities. So we're automatically limited to two options, what you're just telling me, because this is so difficult. So three, now it's three, because you were saying five is the same. Let me understand how we got so far down the road and didn't do the evaluation on all the options.
Well, my recollection is speaking to all of the commissioners, when we talked about bringing you back the options from the stakeholders in January was that you would not have actual dollars put into any of the models. And at that point in time, we indicated that we would be meeting with the departments in February, we would get their budget submissions in February, we would be meeting with them in March, and that it would probably be March, April before we would have a work session with the board if the board wanted to have actual dollars based upon requests that we had received. And so for that reason, we waited until this point in time because in January, you would have not had those requests from the fire department, you would have not known what their needs are. So my recollection is we had those discussions, not necessarily, I think I mentioned it was for public need, but I also has had those discussions individually with board members. So they were aware that staff thought that that was a more appropriate position, and I did not have a commissioner who said, "No, I disagree. I think we should discuss it now." They all felt that it was appropriate to have actual dollars.
I totally agree with you, but we didn't do our homework, find out if the other options were even feasible.
Well, I don't think that precludes them. I think what we're telling you is that if you want it for July 1, 2016, it's not a feasible option. I think what it says is that we would have, there are some other options that if you as a board decided to go that route, we would recommend as far as funding, and then we would have to spend the next year going through that process. The challenge would be, it's kind of a chicken and egg argument because generally, I think when you go into those municipalities and you ask them to approve that district, they're going to ask you what that tax rate is going to be. Well, without having the funding knowledge or funding of what the expectations of the fire departments are going to be, it's harder to tell what that district is going to set up. So either we push that budget process like into probably November for the, you know, like seven months out, eight months out, or they would have to approve it without tax rate. So I'm going to, I don't think we're telling you it precludes it, I think it precludes it for July 1, 2016. I think if you as a board decided to go that way, it could absolutely be done by July 1, 2017. It's just going to, that's just the steps in the process.
If I could help here too, in our meetings that we have with community, one of the problems it came down to at the end is not having the real number. What's the real number? And in our discussion, we were discussing concepts, but not actual numbers. I think that was kind of how we left it into that, is, you know, is it a, you know, four pennies, five pennies, is it four and a half pennies? You know, exactly what we're talking about, we're getting a half of the dollars from Paris. So that was something that came out of the state of the week. But do you agree with that?
I would. There was also discussion about level of service and contract, and how the contract would identify level of service, and once you knew the level of service, you could determine what it cost. I understand we don't have a contract. That process is still ongoing, so.
So that, I think, I'll get to the impact in a second. I want to cover real quick some of the modeling assumptions and changes. What I think I want to point out, we're working to try to finalize and establish the lowest sustainable rates possible, and one of the challenges we've had as we kind of go through this, the, to determine, to do this impact analysis, refining the tax district tax rates has a lot to do with the values within those tax districts. And our tax office right now is getting through finalizing the countywide numbers, and they've issued their estimates to all of the municipalities, but to have to go back and do the tax districts specifically, I haven't had them do that yet until I got some direction because it's a very time consuming process for our tax office to do. So I wanted to be sure we had direction. So the numbers that you're going to see are real close. They're only sensitive that maybe one or two tenths of a penny up or down based on any changes to estimated outward value. And that's going to be, I think we're pretty close. The countywide rate's pretty stable because we know what the countywide rate value is, and we've been working with that for a while. We've got pretty final numbers on that. And again, in this model, or in these impact assumptions, there's no assumption from Monroe or Weddington included at this point. If you wanted to do that, the impact of that's only going to float up the total rate. So I can tell you the dollar for dollar impact of what any additional funding you add to that equation will cost you, but to kind of keep it pure apples to apples, we didn't add any assumption from Monroe or Weddington as far as any kind of subsidy or give back to those organizations.
Jeff, let me, we had a conversation last week when you talked about the lowest sustainable rate, and in what you shared with me, and I hadn't seen it, I didn't see it in the presentation the other week or this one, but there's five, basically five fire trucks that have been given that weren't requested. There are CBAs for $117,000, you know, a truck for Sandy Ridge, Hemby Bridge, Springs asked for $74,000, and it was a truck, so, and Unionville QRV, and half a million dollars for Waxaw, Torrey, starting by their, you know.
Half payment on a ladder truck.
Half of a ladder truck. And I don't, and understand, I don't question the need, but you know, these things weren't asked for.
I would politely disagree, yeah.
When we sat down the table-
I'm just telling you what the chief's told.
And that's fine, I'll explain, no worries. The, what that, there's a difference in how if we keep, and this is important to the modeling too, so this is, it's a good discussion, I'm glad you asked this question. If you were to go with six tax districts, how you funded capital changes. Under the countywide version, what we have done is we've said, okay, we're going to create, based on the fire study, a pool of funding. It's about 1.7 million, 19,000, I think, next year.
That's what you told me.
Yep. And in that pool, what we're doing is cash funding trucks versus giving dribs and drabs or debt payments to the fire departments. So for instance, when we sat down with, and I can't remember who the SCBA was, but they asked for two years of $58,000.
Stallings.
No, that's the, that's one of them, there's two. Stallings is the 400,000, Stallings is the $400,000, and I'll talk about that in a second. But for instance, they asked for $58,000 over two years to replace their SCBA. Well, we looked at our capital needs list, and what we suggested was, instead of spending that over two years, what we would recommend is you do that in one. Or in the case of Unionville, he asked for a QRV and maybe one-sixth of a truck. Well, we said, we'll wait on the one-sixth of the truck, but we'll go ahead and fund the QRV. Or in the instance of Hemby Bridge, what they came in and he said was, we may or may not do this depending upon the funding, but I can't tell you right now, but, but he put in his request in our discussions, a utility truck, some design work for a new station, and a new engine, I believe.
It was about $800,000.
Yeah, there's about $800,000.
He plugged in and indicated that he couldn't give us specifics, here's what he was thinking, but he would be looking to his board of directors to tell him what to buy.
Right, and Chief Getty down in Mineral Springs, what he said was, "I'm looking for a truck. Here's what the payment would be, can you add the payment to my budget?" And we said, "How much do you think that truck's going to be?" Well, a new truck would be about $715,000, that's kind of gets to the point you were talking about the other night. And he said, "Well, I'm not going to pay $715,000 for that, but that's what a new one would be, I think I can get it used." And it's going to be no more than $300,000. And then, so we recommended funding $300,000 because what we wanted to do is systematically help the fire departments get off of being dependent upon debt to fund apparatus. And one of the benefits of the countywide rate is that we provide that PEGO. So what you do is eventually, over time, all those interest payments instead of paying the bank interest can result in additional apparatus throughout the county with no new debt to those fire departments. So that's the difference in how we recommended it, where the departments have asked for dribs and drabs and pieces, we funded whole chunks to provide for that piece of apparatus, particularly if they needed. And the folks that asked for the dribs and drabs that weren't an immediate need, we pushed those off into a future year. For instance, in Waxaw, what they said is in the next year or two, we're going to need to get a ladder truck because of the big box buildings that they're having down there. And we, when we talked to Chief Fitzgerald at the time, what he said, it's going to be about a million dollars. So that's a big bite to take out of 1.7 million dollar capital budget. So what we said is we'll do 500 now and plan to do 500 next year. And Stallings, for instance, asked for SCBA over two years at $200,000 a year. He unfortunately has gotten put off two years now, so we funded him at 400,000 to provide all of his SCBA. So it wasn't in their, it wasn't necessarily that way in their RIN request, but it was that way when we sat at the table, and this is part of the dialogue that goes back and forth, when we sat at the table and talked with them, we talked about their needs and what their vehicle needs were and kind of refined their, their request for next year to kind of understand that. And that's what we recommended is going down through that list as to what they need. And in the tax districts, a chunk or a fairly good sized component, for instance, in Hemby Bridge, about, probably about 40% of that capital funding comes from existing fund balance on the county side that we have from additional revenue in the tax district. So it's not necessarily a PEGO, it's not showing up in the tax rate, but it's supporting, it's supporting the Hemby Bridge Fire Department for that purpose. So there was a lot of discussion around the equipment, and we don't believe we recommend anything that was not needed. We think everything that was needed is in there. And some of them got pushed out to ladder years, and we didn't do anything, of course, with buildings because we haven't ironed down a building program yet. So does that kind of help answer that question?
Am I reading the response to Chief Getty? Did he ask for $655,000 and you're recommending giving him $905, is that right?
Right, because when he asked, he only, he didn't ask for the full truck, he asked for the debt payment. And what we've said is we don't want to recommend a debt payment because we feel like that the interest costs in those debt payments are better served to buy apparatus versus pay the bank interest. And on a countywide basis, it's, it's more economical, economically makes more financial sense, and I think it's in line with the fire study told us, to have a pool of financing or a pool of PEGO funds versus having all those individual departments carry debt. So for instance, you have the 1.7 million, that's not even a penny on your tax rate, but in somewhere where they pick up maybe a $50,000 payment, that could be two, three pennies in a localized district. So it makes more sense from a countywide perspective to help try to keep those fire departments out of debt, and because of the symbiotic relationship to the county, to the fire departments, what's in their best interest financially is in our best interest as well. So I think that that relationship kind of helps us through that process and having that cash pool funding allows us to take care of their needs without making the most economic and efficient use of the funds versus paying interest to the banks, no offense to the bankers.
Perfect, thanks, Jeff.
So that's kind of where we are in kind of some of the assumptions. Other than that, we haven't really made any real changes to the modeling from what you saw last Monday night. We've worked a little bit to try to come up with a rate recommendation, and you'll see that in the third slide, but I want to walk you real quick through the three analysis we have. The sixth district option, we called it a new district. First I called it a sixth district and then realized that there's a movie by that name, and we don't really want to apply that. So we called it the new option or the new district, and if you look, the new district tax rate, based on our projections, would be about 9.2 cents or almost 9.3 in the first year, and then would escalate out to 2022 to 14.6. And then, of course, in Hemby Bridge, Stallings and the different tax districts you can see, with Stallings probably being early on your highest, but by the end of the period, you're looking at all of the tax rates except for Wesley Chapel being above that, above six and, above 6.7, the highest being Waxaw, and this is due probably in what their equipment apparatus needs and their growth being about 7.75 cents, with the total district, which encompassed geographically the majority of the county, being right at 14.6 cents at the end of that time. And again, what this does is, this includes their, a level loaded stat, a level loaded equipment assumption that would either allow them to take out debt or would allow them over time if they saved it up to buy cash for equipment, and it also includes an initial staffing assumption based on the chief's plans. We sent out last Wednesday the request to all the fire departments to get gratification of their equipment list and their projections of useful life, as well as their staffing projections, courtesy of this out, to get their staffing projections over the next five years? Was it five? So again, without those assumptions at hand, we're still working out the chief's plan from the summer, and this would achieve the chief's plan from the summer, which I believe is a minimum two 24/7, two slots, 24/7 in every fire station. And then again, so that's what that, you'll see, it kind of ramps up to 2021 and then kind of levels out a little bit. That's where you would achieve that full staffing, and this doesn't allow any fire department to get more than one piece, one person in a year or one slot in a year. So option two, based on the projected, so again, going back, this is just the comparison. We had the option five or the sixth district option. So this is the option two, the countywide rate, as you can see, 423, 501, 534, and so forth, with the peak rate being 616. You see the districts, because these are additive of the countywide rate, so you see they're all kind of even up or come out about the same. So when you get to this point in your projections, everybody's paying about the same for fire coverage, within a penny of each other. The countywide being the low end because in this model, the five districts have additional services, so it's the use of a special services district as it should be to pay for, or to pay for not premium, but above base level of services and staffing. Then you see the countywide at 6.16 at the end of the projection period is what everybody in the county is paying for. And I want to point out again, the way to look at fire service in the county is, these, all of these stations don't live in isolation. So anytime that there is a call out for one of these stations, there's an auto aid response. So what you're paying for, or what you're looking at here is kind of the approach of, it's a countywide systematic approach to fire service that ensures that base level of service universally. Under this model, you can see, we get to that base level of service, however, you kind of have that high, that high tax rate otherwise, and that's kind of been the discussion is, what's a reasonable tax rate? And you saw in our slide for what, what is kind of things that you as a board must find, and the question that becomes, is it economically feasible within those districts to charge that level of tax rate? So, okay.
Is that 4.23, the remaining part of the county?
The 4.23 would be everywhere, would be everywhere that's not these fire districts. And I want to point out real quick too, that as we mentioned, this makes no assumption because anything you would give back to Weddington or give back to Monroe, we'd come on top of that 423 and would just add to the entire group. In that case, Weddington, and I won't speak about Monroe, but Weddington does still enjoy the auto aid response as well as the additional help from the fire, the fire departments around it. So what you're looking at is, for instance, in Weddington, you have one station, and you have the other stations, Stallings, and you have Wesley Chapel and that Crescent and those other contiguous areas. So the folks in Weddington would be benefiting to some degree from, not to the fullest extent, but to some degree from the fire coverage provided through discounting by tax rate. So with that in mind, what we went back and we said, kind of like we approached the schools a couple of years ago, those are either on board at that time. What is a level loaded rate so that we don't have to come back over the next three years while we're kind of working out some stuff, come back to you and inch that rate up over time? You know, we're looking at 423, 501, 534. Well, we went back and we said, okay, if we were going to recommend the rate, and this is on the countywide side, pretty much where I think we're going to kind of level out at, is if you go with 445, what that does is it allows you about 5.5% growth in your fire, your countywide fire funding over that time, provides for the capital, provides for some staffing cost increases because we know that as we refine that staffing plan, we probably aren't going to go full fledged into the chief's plan because that's a fairly aggressive staffing model. So this is probably a more realistic approach to it, and what we would do is through the fire fund, kind of like we have with the schools, is over time, in the first year, you can see that rate is a little bit more than the 423, but the backend rate is a lot lower than the 534. And what we would do is build a little bit of balance in the first year, in the middle year, break about even, and then in the third year, spin down the balance, and then adjust the rate in the fourth year. So by 2020, we'd be looking at, hopefully having a very good capital plan and a very good staffing plan to be able to continue and set that level loaded rate into the next period. This allows then that rate stabilization over time, then you can see the impact. Again, this is kind of the staffing assumptions, implements the staffing assumptions in the tax districts over that period, and you see again, by 2019, we still get kind of to everybody paying within the neighborhood of each other with Wesley Chapel being the lowest rate in those groups. And if you wanted to determine what the rate is, I don't have- And if you wanted to determine what the rate is, I don't have, I don't have a specific slide for this, but I can absolutely kind of give that to you later if you want it. To determine what the localized rate is, just take four-four-five off of any of these. So for instance, in Wesley Chapel, they're paying a little over point seven for the county-wide piece. Right now, they're paying a half a penny for county-wide. They're going to be paying about point seven for county-wide service that, to provide that, and then, of course, going up and down. And there's two things that are causing that increase. Increased staffing in the tax districts is the main issue. And we froze out because of the way sales tax works, we froze the tax, the sales tax contribution, so we didn't harm them. So they're kind of held harmless through the sales tax. And if you remember back, the way sales tax is done is it's based on the levy from each tax district, and they get a proportional share. So under this model, Wesley Chapel has a point seven proportional share, where it used to have three pennies proportional share. So if we went through the calculation and trued it up, they'd get a lot less sales tax. In this case, what we've done is benefited the taxpayer in the district by holding them harmless to the sales tax piece. So that's kind of what, you know, we alluded to a level-loaded rate last week. Again, like I said, we're refining the tax district numbers, but I don't expect those to move up or down really more than maybe a tenth, two tenths at most through the refinement of the ad-armed rates at their vehicles and that kind of stuff. So that...
Before you go further, let me ask you a quick question. Is that four-four-five, is that what you're planning on charging the now fee districts, who are going to charge them the fee? Is that...
No fee, this is no fees at all. The fire fees would go away completely. This would be the, they would get, right now, where they have a point four-eight on their tax bill for fire tax, county-wide fire tax, they would see point zero four-four-five would be their tax, would be, I'm sorry, point zero zero four-eight is where they're at now. They would see the point zero four-four-five would be their tax bill for fire service, but they'd have no fee. So what this does is, and I'll show you the tax impacts in just a second, but it takes a person below kind of that median, or well, actually well above the median, because in most places, the effective rate's fairly high. The, when you convert the fire fee to tax rate, that fee is a much higher tax rate. So most folks, as we're going to see in the analysis, over status quo, are going to see an actual deduct in their tax bill under this model versus what they would have had either way. Because what I did was, I ran for the tax analysis, I ran a status quo based on their current budget request, because again, it would change the way we fund capital. And then I ran option two, and then option, in this case, option five. So before, it probably, it becomes clearer when you start looking at the tax bill impacts, how this would work. So you can see, for instance, in Lanes Creek, we have status quo, option two, and option five. Option two and five are based on the capital recommendation and based on the recommended budgets where we as staff have met with the fire departments and gone through and kind of weeded those through. I think we still have a couple of those meetings for folks to come back. We met with Chief McLendon from Wesley Chapel last week. So that's the starting place to determine tax rates. And then with their property value, this is the average property value, taxable value. So you'll see through them all, eleven thousand one thirty-five is about the average vehicle in the county. We didn't try to pretend we knew how many people had two, three, four. We just said, everybody has one, for the purposes of kind of apples to apples. And then the in-district tax, the in-district property value. This isn't the lowest, this isn't the highest, this is just one we picked because of geographic location. And you can see, if you go through, their fire fee as a tax rate would be ten cents. The way to read this is move the decimal over if you want to convert it to ten pennies, but it would be ten cents for them as a fire district. Then you see the county-wide rate would still be two cents to support the above, to support the above the fee need that they have, and then EMS, and then you have your county, county tax rate. So this is a fully loaded rate with the exception of schools. So this is what it looks like without the schools piece at all. Because we have, we're not sure what that's going to be at this point, because we haven't seen their recommendation or their request. Keeping in mind, this would be, there's only one that didn't hit the hundred dollar threshold. So this would be a hundred dollar fire fee plus these tax rates coming down through. So their tax bill would be about four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Under option two, it'd be about three hundred and fifty-five. And under option five, where they're their own standalone tax district, or the big district, it'd be about four hundred and two dollars. In Unionville, you're looking at about seven hundred and twenty. And the big issue is the value and density, because the density would impact this number. The seven hundred and twenty under the status quo, or the old system, the fire fee system, about six hundred and sixty-three dollars under the fire, I think, option two with the hyper version. And then option five, where they were in their own separate district, would be seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and change. Winget would be about four hundred and sixty-seven under the current system, about three hundred and ninety-three under option two, and then about four-four-five under option five. Hemby Bridge is almost eight hundred under the current system, seven twenty-six, and then seven twenty-four. And in the tax districts, what you're going to see is, they, these come in real close in most cases. I think the biggest one's going to be Wesley Chapel when we get there. But, but pretty much comparably the same. You see Wesley Chapel, and point out the reason that, the reason that jumps so much is if you look at this number right here, the one eighty-four-four in Hemby Bridge against an average home value of about three hundred and eight, three hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's why that bill jumps up. It's not necessarily because of the difference in the rates, it's because of the difference in the value. You're looking at about just under fourteen hundred under status quo, about ten dollars more, or I'm sorry, a little bit more than seven dollars under option two, and then under option five, much less, because what they're looking at is not having that county-wide fire tax rate that they, up to this point, still support with a half a penny that they pay in. So this would eliminate that support, and that, and you would see that kind of fall into that area. And then Waxaw, you see about nine hundred and eighteen, so status quo is the highest option, eight ninety-eight against eight ninety, almost eight ninety-three. So about five dollars difference between two and five. So what we saw, and I think this, I put this in because I just want to give you one slide column. In your books, there's a tab marked analysis that does this for every district. But from our perspective, this is just one easy way to look at it. If you look at this column right here, this is the difference between option two and option five. Because almost in all cases, with the exception of Wesley Chapel, the status quo is the much higher version. So we compared two to five. So what you're seeing here is the differential, the only one that's more than five dollars, I'm sorry, you have eighteen here in the springs, but you have four dollars in Waxaw, two thirty-five, and this is on their total tax, this is on their tax bill, so this isn't a month. This is just one-time payment. And then the eighty-three dollars in Wesley Chapel. So this kind of gives you that differential, so that you can just see real quickly kind of what those tax impacts are. Again, if you're above the average, it's going to change. If you're below the average, it's going to go the other way, and you're going to see savings, and you're going to see that change more magnified additionally below the median and below the minimum. Yes, sir.
If I go back and look at your option two, you're talking Wesley Chapel, four point nine-six, and you did the analysis in Wesley Chapel, you're using three. Why the difference in the two numbers?
Under this right here?
Yeah, you're saying three, right? Because they're paying what, right now, they're paying two point eight-two, right?
Um, yes, some of that neighborhood.
In that neighborhood, okay. But here, under option two basis, when you talk about the county-wide rate, you're talking about them going to four point nine-six, a two-cent increase. And here, you're using your example as three. Help me understand.
Okay, what's the difference? You're talking about this one right here?
Yes, sir.
That's the, the addition to, I think it's, I want to say, well, it's one nine-six. That's the county-wide support for the remainder, the county-wide funding. Under, that's the big difference between, between those two. So when you go to, in option two, there's a county-wide component. When you're looking just in option three, there's no county-wide component, so their rate goes down. And that's why, because they're not paying that additional, the additional county-wide support.
So you put the surcharge on Wesley Chapel to pay for supporting fee districts?
Not putting a surcharge necessarily. What we're doing is providing a base level of service so that Wesley Chapel rolls out of their, out of their stations, that the surrounding stations also have the sufficient equipment and staffing necessary to provide mutual aid. And that's how I would look at it. I wouldn't, for that additional piece that they get out of the equation, or that they pay in, in this case, most of the fire districts are kind of a net wash. They're getting service in addition to what they're paying for, because it's a, it's a continuum of fire service. It's not, to look at each, each tax district in isolation doesn't work, because that's not how they respond, and that's not how fire service works. So the folks in Wesley Chapel are protected by the other fire districts around it, not necessarily just by Wesley Chapel. As is Weddington. Monroe's more self-contained than the others. But that's kind of the piece, just like we had station subsidies originally and so forth, they're getting additional service out of that. And under option two, what, what's not shown here, particularly in Wesley Chapel's case this year, because he didn't ask for any equipment, is we have, still have that county-wide pot of funding that would provide for the equipment out of that base rate. So for instance, Hemby Bridge, while they are paying in, while they're paying in that, into the county-wide rate, their total, what they're also getting back is equipment this year. So that equipment cost is not added on to, that equipment cost is part of the base. So in the years when they get equipment, for instance, in Waxaw, if they were to buy that million-dollar ladder truck, we didn't raise the tax rate in Waxaw to provide for that ladder truck. What we did is provided the ladder truck out of the county-wide funding so that we take care of their capital needs, so to ensure that all the districts have the fire apparatus they need. The only thing really the districts are paying for is their additional staffing on top of their operating costs. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five split at this point. So that's the difference between the two. I wouldn't necessarily look at it as a premium or a give and take as much as it's trying to insert that county-wide approach. And that's kind of the same way you handle sheriff services or any of our other services we provide, libraries, any of those things where they're open to the county and county-wide. And this would ensure that same, the same approach to providing fire service versus kind of putting a price tag on life, if you will, and saying that folks in the tax districts deserve a higher level of service necessarily, or a higher base than what the rest of the county is. Now, they may, they may have required for a higher level of service because of their density, but at least county-wide, you can assure the base level of service so that on its base, everyone's getting adequate service throughout the county, so.
In your example with the sheriff's department, does all the citizens pay the same, same tax rate, no matter where they live, for the sheriff's services?
They do unless their town is contracted for higher than, higher than services. So that's the municipal choice. So for instance, in this case, if Wesley Chapel wanted to chip in and reduce that rate or pay for that service, they could do that through a municipal tax within their borders, then that would necessarily probably lower the district tax. But if, I don't, didn't bring my maps, didn't think I'd need them. But if we had, if you were to look at the Wesley Chapel Fire District, the Wesley Chapel Fire District is not Wesley Chapel proper. It's a much bigger chunk of the county, a lot of incorporated area down into, I believe, Marv, is it Marv in that area? So it's, it's very similar to law enforcement from that perspective. It's everybody pays for a base. Indian Trails asked for additional patrols, additional services. I think Wesley Chapel's asked for additional patrol, additional service in the municipalities, so they pay. So those, those are, those units are dedicated. The folks in Waxaw fund a police department, and we have sheriff's services. So they pay for additional services through their town, through a municipal police department, which any town under this model could always opt in, or opt out to the point where they could have their own municipal fire district. Then the only piece that they would be paying for is the county-wide, because the auto aid and the mutual response pieces, it kind of provides that base level of service. So, are there any other questions? So with that in mind, I think we're going to okay on time. That's all the analysis and additional work we've done. So at this point, I need, we kind of need direction as to where you want us to go, how you want us to proceed. Lance, did you have any comments or questions? Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with moving forward with this. When I look at the, the funding model, and I look at the, the fee districts, the amount of increases over the, over the six years that are projected, that are built into the budget, I just have concerns it's a little aggressive. While I understand the direction that we're going, I think we're trying to compress ten years or fifteen years' worth of change into six years. And I'm just not comfortable with the district. If we're looking at two and a half million in increase from prior year's budget to this year, you're looking at roughly a penny, and we're looking at taking some of these, these districts up significantly higher than that by making a change.
I think the challenge you have, and I understand your concern about the growth, the challenge we kind of have is, because we froze last year, there's a little bit of pent-up demand for additional costs. And in some cases, for instance, like Wesley Chapel, Wesley Chapel implemented its budget as requested, not as the county approved it. So this is bringing, this would bring their twenty-six, or twenty-seventeen budget in line with kind of where they would have been otherwise over the last two years. So that's kind of why you see that jump. And then once we iron out the, the staffing plan, what will happen is, some of those rates will come down, because not all of that staffing is necessary as we layered it in. And we know that, but trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison without having that information from the fire departments, which we had asked for, but were not provided, I think that that'll allow us then over time to kind of ensure that that growth doesn't come out like you think. And that's why on the three-year, we plugged in a five and a half percent inflationary growth versus saying that we're going to go strictly off the capital personnel model. We're going to go with allowing for five percent, because we think that's a reasonable growth rate, and we'd stay with, kind of within those hedges as we work through it. I know that doesn't necessarily answer your question, but that's kind of the approach we've taken in establishing these. And we can absolutely, if you, if you wanted us to level load the fire districts, we just haven't at this time, because we don't have enough information.
Well, and that's my concern, is you're asking a decision to move forward on taxing without all of the information, and therefore, we don't have the information to make the decision. I, I just, I have a problem with doing that when we still don't have all the information that we need, and we're looking at potentially a, a much larger increase in taxes than is necessary. And we all know that once it goes up, it doesn't go back.
But Commissioner Jeff Yates made, mentioned earlier that Curtis had sent out a request. We have asked that information to be submitted back to us by this Wednesday. I know he's already had some of the chiefs supply that information as it relates to apparatus, equipment, and staffing. We would not present to you a tax rate till budget adoption. And so the refinement that Jeff talked about with respect to that information, and the refinement that tax administration would go through, and, and looking at what property values are generating and updating that, and I suspect they'll be about where they are now, or they'll go down a little bit. But we are still going through that refinement, because we understand that we had to plug information because we didn't have all the information we needed.
And keeping in mind, Commissioner, too, in the fire tax, or the fire fee districts, you're eliminating a hundred dollar fire fee. So I know, we've, we've kind of talked about that off and on, but it's a, it's a swap of fee. It's not necessarily, you're just increasing the tax to increase the tax. The folks in those districts are going to see, most of them are going to see a real reduction in their bill overpaying the hundred dollar fire fee.
I understand, but we still have the same individuals with the same value or similar value of homes in the fee districts as we do in some of the tax districts. So while one individual gets a tax cut, you're going to have the same individual that would love to have a tax cut and need one financially. They're going to see a tax increase, and I fundamentally have a problem with that.
And if you look, if you look at the county-wide rate, every single one of the tax districts are subsidizing. And, you know, my, what I don't understand is that if, what if we applied the same, if you leveled out that? I mean, why should, why should the fee districts have to pay less than, you know, Waxaw, for example? It's, you're burdening the western part of the county, seventy percent of our population, to subsidize your model. And as I said the other day, this philosophy of paying now is totally different from what fire departments have done over sixty years, and they've been very successful over the past sixty years. I don't know that we've adopted that policy, and I think we need more information.
I, I would say this, and this is something that needs to be stated, because there's some mayors here and there's people watching at home. You know, when we look at this, and we talk about a dividing issue and a uniting issue, you know, when it's said that the fire fee districts will, or the fire fee districts are there now, and they're going to get a tax cut... are there now, we're going to get a tax cut, we're going to cut it and anything, you also look at the level of service that we have. You know, we're, we're lucky we have a nine-S, a nine-S rating, that's the base level. When we're looking at other departments in the western part of the county with a six or, you know, a higher rating that gives them a better insurance rating. When we look at schools in the county, the people in the east, I can't remember the last high school building in the east, but we've had several buildings in the west. So, we look at that, and, you know, when you have people in the east that say, well, you have nice new schools, we don't have them, we're still paying, we're still paying property taxes so you can have nice new schools in the west. We don't have water and sewer in the east. There's things that the eastern part of the county doesn't have, and we have fire departments that are mostly volunteers, so that's why we don't have an expensive fire department because a lot of our firefighters are volunteers, they keep the cost down. And hopefully, they will continue to keep the cost down and be able to do that. But at the same time, when you're looking at a department that's, you know, struggling to find the money to hire one person, one person, and you have fire departments in other parts of the county that are looking to hire three or four people, you know, this is not an issue of division. You know, I see this as an issue of uniting the county behind providing good services that no matter where you are in Union County, if you're in a car accident, that you know somebody's going to be there to pull you out and pull your children out, and I don't care if it was thirty kids. If your life's on, on the line or your child's life's on the line, that, those pennies would mean nothing to you. And when we're looking at a tax increase, and just keep, if the word keeps running up, tax increase, there's no tax increase until we adopt the budget. If the tax rate is, let's say eighty cents in Waxaw right now, right now, for example, with your fire tax district and your county tax, and, you know, there's no reason why it should go up, there's no reason why it has to go up. You know, we can adopt a tax, a budget this year that keeps the tax rate the same as it was last year. So, so when we say a tax increase, it's not a tax increase if we don't have a tax increase. It is a reallocation of priorities and funds where we take, maybe we cut back on another department that we have, maybe we cut back in another area of the county to fund safety, which is something that's been, I think, the board's priority over the last, I don't know, four years or more, is the safety of the taxpayers of Union County. I don't mind paying for safety. I, I don't like paying for frill and junk and new, new cars all the time, things like that. I don't mind paying to help these firefighters all over the county and make sure that they have what they need. So, I think we do need to consider that and look at it that way instead of saying that we're going to tax increase to help one person or another person. There's also going to be people in the east, and businesses in the east that are going to have to pay more because they were on a fire fee before, now the whole system's been turned around and they're paying taxes on more of their equipment. Now, had, you know, if we could have done this last year, it would have been absorbed in the revow, and we could have took all this bitter pill at one time. But we waited a year to talk about this, and we had several meetings, months, three months of meetings Chair and I attended to listen to these things, we listened to the concerns of the firefighters, we listened to the concerns of the public, and we tried to find some, some compromises. I think that that's what we did, I think we looked at it, we, we talked about the good, the bad, the pros, the cons, we looked at the impact the contract's going to have on this. So, I really don't want the people thinking that this is a east versus west issue because the, the tax district five would have been all over the county, it would have been the northern part of the county, the eastern part of the county, the southern part of the county, mainly the more rural areas of the county that depends on volunteers. Unionville, for example, if we created a fire tax district with just Unionville and all the other fire fee districts, Unionville would be at the brunt of the tax burden, you know, we sell that on there. So, Unionville would be subsidizing all those other fire tax districts. So, so if we look at fairness and subsidizing and things like that, we're looking at going forward with some kind of model, something that's going to take us into the future, that's going to be sustainable, that's going to be, that, that every year, the county commissioners are not elected based on what are, what they are or what they're not going to do for a certain fire department, that we look at this as a safety issue that needs to be funded and funded properly and correctly. If it means we have to cut other places, then that's what it means, but our tax rate is not set until June. So, there is no tax increase. It's not about tax increase, it's about our priorities, where we're going to put them, and if we don't need these trucks, great, we don't have to fund them, we don't have to fund them. If the fire chiefs say we don't need that this year, great, that, that's less of a burden this year. Now, if you're, Jeff, if you guys are looking at doing something where you have a pool of money, yes, it might be, if that's what you're talking about doing, is throwing a big pool of money out there, it could be a lot of the tax rate, but could we not do it from other sources, could we not do it from the, you know, from growth and reserves and other things? Because basically, it's providing no interest loan.
Well, it's not necessarily a loan, it's providing the equipment they need.
Right, but it's still, you're taking that money that we're spending in interest, which is low anyways, two, two percent, maybe?
Three percent, but if you look at it over time, three percent over twenty years across the system provides an additional piece of apparatus every year versus having to pay that debt. And I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, and this is one of those issues that it's, like I said, a chicken and egg, where you have to find the best-fit solution at the time. The fire fee model, and we were having this conversation the other day, the fire fee model is, is just not really sustainable, and it really was put in place as kind of a temporary approach at the time. I think even there was some discussion of a sunset provision at one time in that, in that legislation that authorized it. And there's a reason we're one of only two counties that do it, and the other county is going away from it as well, is it just doesn't work under the current constraints. If we wait till we have perfect knowledge concerning all of the pieces, then we're going to be back into 2017, you're going to be back to heavily subsidizing a fire fee structure because we're not going to have between here and your adoption date, perfect knowledge. What we have, though, done is provided in that level-loaded rate, the ability to fund capital, some, some growth space for staff, as well as in the tax districts under this setup, some, some assumptions. You only tax, you only adopt tax rates one year at a time, so each of these would have to come back to you, 2018 and 2019. So, you're not, this isn't like the water rate where we adopted, the rate increases out over a window, you're adopting that tax rate every year. So, certainly, those tax districts could be tweaked to the benefit of the tax district depending upon what the fire departments ask for. As far as the level-loaded rate in the general fund, what we try to do is get it the lowest possible rate over the three-year window so you don't continually have to adjust for the majority of the county that tax rate. So, I understand what you're saying, but we're kind of at a point where we, we, we're asking that you make a decision as to, are we going to change or we're not going to change? And what I'm telling you is I think the model you have currently is broken and is not going to work in the long run, it's just going to continually drive that rate up to be able to provide for those services. And as far as capital, us providing capital or them borrowing, our recommendation is the most efficient use of money, and that's the best I can say. And I don't think it changes their autonomy or it just tells them what piece of equipment to have, it just provides funding so they don't have, all those districts have to run out of borrowing money. And in some cases, some of them have a hard time getting it without a subsidized loan from somebody else. So, we're just kind of looking for direction at this point.
And it's consistent with what the 2009 fire study indicated, was at that point in time, they said there should be a pot of money, one point six million dollars, as I recall, that should be used to assist the departments in ensuring they have a necessary apparatus. And so, we've used one point seven is the number we've used.
Right.
And just to be clear, if, if we kept the status quo and the fire tax, the fire fee districts that are there now, suddenly, volunteers started dropping like flies and we didn't have the people there to staff those departments, the, all the other parts of the county would still be subsidized and put at a higher rate.
Right.
Kind of a rate, four point three now, could be one, two, three pennies.
What you're looking at, for instance, here's Hemby Bridge. If we were to fund Hemby Bridge and this provides some staff, this is based on the request, going back to what you were talking about, Commissioner. If we just went through the request because we don't, we're not going to do any kind of bull funding, their rate would be point seven, seven cents based on how they're in district. And so, this should be split out, shouldn't be one rate, but this should be split out. But you would still, to fund the fire fee districts at the level they're requested, you would need two cents on a county-wide basis just to fund them with the hundred-dollar fire fee. Again, only one, Griffith Road, is below the hundred-dollar fire fee. And they jump from, I think they're like sixty-four dollars now to seventy-nine dollars.
That was Jackson.
I'm sorry, Jackson, not Griffith Road, Jackson. I was getting those confused, sorry. If you go, Jackson would jump from about sixty-five dollars to almost eighty dollars in their fire fee, whereas everybody else hits the cap, hundred plus, then needs additional, would need additional subsidy above that. So, I, I hear what you're saying, you're, you're getting caught in two things right now, is the conversion plus growth. And I tried to the best I could by doing the status quo option is to show you, in isolation, just growth in those districts and their cost. Because if you're going to go that route, there are smaller districts that still require equipment, still require staffing, that have to be provided for through some way, and the hundred-dollar fire fee just doesn't do it. So, and again, like in Wesley Chapel, so you would see the two-eight-five in Wesley Chapel would be there, but you would still have that two-one-three. So, you're still looking at four point nine cents in Wesley Chapel to do both pieces. So...
And the fire fee alone hasn't done it for how many years?
I don't, looking back...
How many years have they given a subsidy?
Oh, my gosh, the entire time I've been here.
Yeah, two thou, I looked back, about 2002 is the farthest back of our records in any kind of detail, and those are kind of sketchy at best, and it looks like we were doing fire subsidy at that time.
We were doing station subsidies, substation subsidies, we've been doing that for years in addition to the hundred dollars, but I know definitely since 2011 is when the subsidies even started to grow more significantly, where it was just more than the station subsidy or substation subsidies we were adding.
And what you're looking at is in the past, where we'd be paying for the fire truck plus entrance plus two, three, four percent?
Two, three percent, or you're paying one-sixth of a fire truck annually or something to that effect. So, what this does, under the, under the capital model we're talking about, it allows us to fund them as needed versus having individual pockets of savings around the county because if you go back to look at the fire districts, there's been a lot of discussion about fundraising and all these other things other than county funding. The vast majority, ninety-plus percent of that funding for those fire departments comes through the county. It doesn't, it's not raised locally or through municipal contracts, the exception probably being what used to be Providence, because that's really in truth, mostly municipal district at this point. So, but as a whole, and this kind of goes back to what you're talking about, in about 2002, 2003 timeframe in that area, we saw about four stations having staffing. Well, by the end of the projection model, all stations have staffing. At this point, all but four have asked for staffing funding in 2017. So, you, you have this, two, two things happening, and you're kind of working on two axes in this case, you're working on the growth and the cost of funding and the flip in the rate from, from a fee to a rate. So, again, in isolation, any one part of that in isolation, you're looking at still a penny and a half, a penny-six increase to cover just the growth, unless we go back in or you freeze them at where they were in sixteen, and then we could roll it back down probably to that half penny. But if you were just going to fund them and allow them to save up for their equipment and do kind of all the stuff they asked for in their budgets, except for in fair view of the new station, you would be looking at still that two cents, right around two-point one cents to fund the above hundred-dollar piece. Does that make sense? So, it just, it kind of just tells me, and looking at the numbers, that our funding structure is just broken, the, the fee structure is just broken. It's really, you know, if you kind of go back to the concept of fire districts as, as for the use for public safety, the concepts, it, it's hard because usually districts are used for something supplemental, localized sewer, water sewer, recre, you know, they can be used for recreational venues, I think libraries, specific libraries, some of the, there's a whole list of things in, in the general statute. But really, you don't see sheriff services in there, public safety is kind of above, you know, it should be doled out across the county in a, on a level basis. So, going back, you know, there probably should have been at that point discussion at, at the time of establishing this funding model in general with the mixed bag. So, we're trying to get that trued up and adjusted, right-sized for the county. So, again, with that.
Comments?
I would just say that these are the kind of issues that impact counties in transition. We had a stakeholder committee to study this, and we talked about individual tax districts. We have an option today of option five that takes those rural areas and combines them into one, and it was nine, is that right?
Nine point two, I believe.
Growth on the west impacts people on the east. I'm sure you can all remember back when we talked about impact fees on New House, when we were building those schools, it's Tony talked about. We're not an island unto ourselves, we have fourteen municipalities, and that's all about self-determination, working in that direction. And I'm certain that as we move over the next fifteen to twenty years, that we will transition into additional fire tax district as we move from west to east. But right now, we're not there. I don't know who's going to contact the legislature to ask them to go to a hundred and fifty dollars or two hundred dollars on the fire fee. I can only imagine, you showed, was that Lanes Creek, eighty-seven thousand dollar property value? What's a two hundred-dollar fire fee on, on that individual?
If you went to full two hundred, you'd be looking at about this rate with double, so it would be twenty cents.
Twenty cents. So, we talk about fairness, is it fair at all concern? A two hundred-dollar tax fee certainly isn't fair to that individual. And, and an increase county-wide on, on Wesley Chapel, where all those rooftops are, maybe it's not fair to those individuals. But we got to all work together. I was, I was charged, being elected, to try and save as many tax dollars for that taxpayer as I can. And to me, option two is what's going to do that the best. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Comments?
Well, you know, I, I, like I've said all along, that public safety is, in my opinion, the primary focus of government, and to me, option two makes the most fiscally responsible sense for taxpayers across the board. I'm not, I'm not going to look at it in a silo of east versus west because Chairman Rush's point, you know, there's a lot of subsidization of east for the west and, and, you know, that's been an ongoing concern. And I, I think for years, I've heard so many commissioners run on, oh, I'm going to solve the divide between the east and the west. There is no solving the divide. We have to look at this county as a whole. And to me, this is, it's what's fair across the board. So, I, I agree, I think option two is, is where we need to go, but also with Chairman Rush's point, we're not voting on a tax rate today. And we have an opportunity to look at that once the full budget is presented and make a, an inform, more informed decision based on what we see there. So, I'm in favor of moving forward with the preparation of budget using option two.
Lance, did you have any comments, Lance Simpson?
No, I, I still, I still have the same concerns. If, if we get in the budget, what I don't want to have is staff spend a lot of time on option two, the budget, when we realize there is a significant increase and everybody, again, goes back and says, well, I want, I don't want a tax increase. That, that, that's my concern, is we're still looking at a, a tax increase because in, in my view, we're trying to compress a, a changing county, the, the model for fire service from a ten-to-fifteen-year plan into a six-year plan, and I look at some of the, the changes in the budget on some of the fee districts, and it's significant. You're looking at more than doubling a couple of them over the next six years, and I, I just don't know that that's, that's realistic. And some of the other ones, maybe they're underfunded. So, I'd just like to have a little bit more accurate information to see what the potential impact is.
He may have mentioned a while ago the give-backs, talking to Monroe. Now, are these rates, they're going to hit, hit the municipalities as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Monroe, Weddington are going to pay the four point?
The four, four, five.
Okay.
Under the level-loaded rate. Under the level loaded rate. And I, I don't know what their rates are going to be locally, so I can't tell you what the total impact is for.
Well, I have to say, you know, I, I agree with what Commissioner Rushin was saying about not trying to create a divide, but, but the numbers don't add up. I can tell you that I think the ten cent rate that you, you quoted just a minute ago for Lanes Creek, I've been looking, I'm looking to move from Mental Springs, which is a tax district, out into a fee district. I have no personal concern about the fire service that will be provided in the area because they all do an exemplary job. However, you know, I ride, ride around and look at these three-quarter million, million dollar houses and they're not paying ten cent. They're not going to pay ten cent and yet they, they don't under the fee. So, you know, other, other concern I have is your motor vehicle value, you know, I'm a little familiar with computers and I know you can tell me exactly by fire district what they were, so, you know, a loading thing, I don't think is a value assumption.
Unfortunately, because of motor vehicle tax collection method being the way it is now, having, we don't do that part of it in-house, so having to buy the district and talking with the tax office, when we did the tax bills back in the day and we collected all that down here, yes, we could tell you specifically by tax district, but we have to apply an average across the county. So, and that's, again, the home values are average, so there are people above and below. I would argue that the majority of our houses are not half million dollar, million dollar plus in the county and those districts, that the average is the average, so, you know, obviously, you have some folks that are below that.
Well, I, I can't support option two the way, the way you presented, because I think, you know, I, I talked with the, the chief of Wesley Chapel, and I know he came back and made an adj-, y'all made an adjustment this week, but I think what he told me came out to be two point eight nine is what, what his actual rate would be. And I know that every time we, we do those rates, we end up with a surplus. I'd, I'd rather look, I, I, I'd rather adjust it, if we got surpluses adjusted so our taxpayers' benefits, so can you bill it, unless you can put it into a capital.
Well, that's what we've done.
Well, I, I know you've done that somewhat.
Many surpluses have been, all of the surplus has, and we're kind of governed by general statute as far as what we, what we, where we're required to budget as far as ad valorem. And I know Chief McClendon did his estimates, his informations from Jan-, or January or before, so we're trying to update, again, like I said, we'll be refining those numbers one more time based on latest, which is discovery, which is appeals, all those different things. So all I can tell you is our numbers come from the tax office. They're the best numbers available. I don't think we're that far off from what his estimate was, I just know he's using older data and we would need to refine ours. And I don't think there's any way around either surplus or in some cases maybe negative, depending upon where it goes and what happens in the year.
And I agree with what Commissioners Jerry Simpson said, is that, you know, the contract, are we any closer? Have we had any more meetings?
There's a meeting with them.
Okay. We're still putting the cart before the horse. I'm sorry, I can't support it.
I would say, you know, option two's not my favorite. I like the stony plan. I felt like that we let the, you know, with that, we let the people that wanted, needed higher level service, the density areas cover for that, take for that, keep to a ton. But last year, I was ready to vote for option two, up until the time, it was, it was, that night, I was completely fine and voted for option two as presented last year. We gave a year to look at it, tried to come up with some, we tried to come up with some compromises, tried to look at some, you know, where the fire departments were coming from, where the needs were coming from, where the, how to best serve the citizens above all. You know, looking at this, we're not looking at serving the county commissioners, we're not looking at serving the county staff, we're not looking at serving the fire departments and the boards of the fire departments, we're looking at serving the people of Union County. And if you can do that at a lower cost, option two, I'll support option two. I just feel like that, you know, when we look at things in, in this light, your, your charge and I, I would say your challenge in this, Jeff, is to make sure that that rate, that county rate is not going to go up. If we're, if we're going to do this and implement this program, that we're going to have to look for cuts in other places, we're going to be looking at shifting funding. And I know you guys have kind of a bare-bones budget and you're looking at that, but along with Commissioner Lance Simpson's point, we're still trying to attract industry, we're still trying to be a friendly environment for business and economic development, and we don't need a huge tax burden on, on our people. And we don't need to put a huge tax burden that we have to on anybody else. Monroe's going to bear the brunt of this. They, they were upset about it last year about the additional rate. Again, I would go back and say, the citizens of Monroe, no matter which direction they travel, to go somewhere else, benefit from a healthy fire department countywide, a healthy fire services countywide. So when you're in that car, you're trapped, and somebody comes to get you out, pennies don't matter. So I'll, I'll support option two. Do you need a vote? Do you need a?
I prefer a, I prefer a motion if we're going to vote if I could.
Commissioner Lance Simpson, because he's with his electronic and asked that he be allowed to do this because this is an important discussion, he's, he's able to discuss and get input, but he's not able to vote on these issues electronically. We don't have that allowance in government, is that right, Jeff? Okay, so Lance, apologize if you're not able to vote.
Question, Mr. Chair, is, is it the urgency that we can't?
I'm going to have to rework the budget. If, if we don't adopt this, then where I am is I'm going to have to rework the budget on the general fund to look at increasing subsidies to all of the VFDs. So from my perspective, we have pushed this about as far as we can push it in order for me to deliver a budget to you by July.
You can't wait till next Monday when all Commissioners will be present?
Commissioner, with the, with the greatest respect to all of the board members, we have now talked about this issue four hours just in this setting. We talked about it, I don't know how many hours last year. My concern is we continue to postpone and I don't know that we get any closer to a resolution. So if this is not where we want to go this year, then I need to know that and we will just go back to a system, in my opinion, does not work, does not serve the community well, but that's what we do and, and that's where I am right now.
And let me, let me say this, you know, I, I understand that, you know, nobody, I don't like being put under the gun. I don't like to be put in situations where you got to make a decision right now. But to staffs, you know, everybody has pushed this a little bit. I think the, I think we have pushed it as a board, we pushed it back a year from last year. It's probably been pushed many years from, from then and Jerry Simpson made a comment about kicking the can down the road. You know, the fire departments have, did everybody come in and submit their budget on time?
No. And some of them, a lot of the information requests was incomplete.
Yeah, and we're in contract negotiations that have not been completed. There's a lot of things that haven't been completed, but our concept of what we're going to do, our concept of how we're going to continue is what we're looking at. And I feel comfortable endorsing that concept today and getting it on the way because I know we can't stay with the fire fee. And trust me, there's a lot of people that, that would support me and say, wait, the fire fee's fine. That's fine with us. And, and these, and these folks will be paying a lot more. But it's not about friends and associates at this point, it's about what's, doing what's right, moving this forward and being sustained. So entertain a motion. I'm entertaining. If, if you're anybody that would like to make the motion, I'll be ready for it. That light doesn't focus on the spot.
I'll make the motion if we provide staff with the direction to base fire funding projections on option two.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All those people say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Great. Do we need a break or are we going to just keep going? Do we have to take a recess or?
You don't have enough time.
Sorry, I don't have time. Because I probably need to leave you about five minutes to deal with the, your agenda, right?
Yes, yes, please. I don't know that it'll take five minutes, but.
I'll give you a little bit of time, thirty seconds. Okay, so transitioning now, what I want to talk about is a review of revenue and expenditures and capital funding, because I think it's important, if you were to look at kind of the budget as a whole, and I'll just be a little bit changing gears from our kind of real detailed discussion, take a step back, this is going to be kind of a ten-thousand-foot view of where county funding comes from, where it goes, how we're funded, because we're a complex organization. You know, we have this conversation a lot of times, there's a big difference between the county and any kind of our community partners, because we provide multi-levels of service, we're pretty much full function, with the exception of not having an airport, we have utilities, we provide public safety, we provide social services, humans, you know, all the human services palette, we provide cultural services, we provide ag extension services, and partnership with state. So it's good to step back for a second and kind of just understand how our funding's composed and kind of, the pieces you can play in, because one of the big challenges you have as a government and as a board is, when you start looking at your available funding sources and your sources of revenue, and I think this last discussion just kind of typified that, you're kind of limited in what you can do. There, you don't have a huge palette of options. Being a federal state or a, you know, you have that limited, we're not home rule, so you can't just decide to create a revenue source. What you have to do as a board then is have this, have the state give you permission to do that. So you're kind of limited and I, and I want to kind of think through this on a global perspective. So what we're going to do is we're going to talk about general fund today, recognizing, and I'll mention the other funds in a moment, but most of the other funds out of the government are specific purpose funds with specific purpose revenues attached to specific services. But I think it's important to kind of take a look at the general fund and where it comes from. And this is kind of our working numbers right now. None of these are set in stone, so please don't take this presentation and tie it up to the budget book that you get because there's still a little bit of room. I think they were working all weekend to refine, I pulled these numbers last week. So the way we're funded, as you can see, the predominant piece of the pie is through taxes. And this is made up of two pieces. About sixty-seven point eight percent of our revenue comes through sales tax and through ad valorem tax. And the ad valorem tax is further broken down into ad valorem on motor vehicles and ad valorem on property and personal property. And what you see there is about a, right around a forty, close to a forty, sixty split between those two revenues. Our projections for FY seventeen on sales tax, about forty million dollars, and then up, and then about seventy million coming through the ad valorem tax rate. And of that, you know, when you talk about sales taxes, you can't change your sales tax rate. We have, I believe, maybe a quarter penny left that, that's optional locally, that could be voted. You're looking at really your fixed sales tax authorized by the state and your property taxes. The majority of your sales tax, all of your sales taxes right now are allocated to fund school debt. And you're by law required to push the four types of taxes, required to push about different levels of percentages onto school capital and school debt. So we're in accordance with that. So anytime you hear that kind of mentioned, we comply completely with the general statutes related to allocation of sales tax and then some. The new tax change yielded about three million dollars on our projections to the county. Again, we won't know for sure until we get this time next year because there are taxes on services we've never had before, their allocation, but we use the state estimates at this point. And again, even a portion of that new three million has to be sliced and given to the schools to support debt. So it's easier for us to allocate and cleaner to allocate all those sales taxes. And then ad valorem taxes kind of go to everywhere else. And you see that net takers table we do, and I didn't do it for this presentation, but I will for next Monday, that kind of shows by service area, how much you pay in taxes for each of those service areas. And what you would see is that schools are probably about three cents above and beyond sales tax, or used to be, and probably less than that this year. The sheriff's department is probably about ten cents of your tax rate, and then human services makes up the, kind of the other part. And then the rest are dribs and drabs. Two, three cents for maybe community services, less than that, you know, you have pennies here and there that kind of make up the difference. So I think that that's important and you kind of work your way around the wheel. I'll talk about fund balance because we have a specific strategy related to fund balance, which I'll mention. Other revenues, this is primarily lease revenue and other one-time things, sale of assets. Every time we turn over a truck, you see those items. We handle surplus auction on my office, that, we put that into the pot, donations and kind of things like that, investments. I think last check, we're getting forty basis points on our reven-, on our investments, which is double what we were getting last year because we're in pooled, we're in pooled investments. So that's where that comes from, that's the investment on fund balance. Charges for service, I'll delve down into that a little more detail. And then revenue from other governments. And this is real important because revenue from other governments, with the exception of that pie right there, ninety-six thousand dollars, all of this revenue from other governments, about thirty-five million dollars, has a specific purpose attached to it. We're not allowed to go somewhere else and spend that money. I can't take that thirty-five million and fund the sheriff with it, although some of that is sheriff funding. But I can't take that and fund, you know, we can't give that to the schools, for instance, or give it to the water and sewer fund, or do anything else with it, because that generally comes with requirement from either a grant agreement, general statute, federal law, those are your pass-throughs that come through social services and human services for subsidies, for benefit payments. It could be anything from the sheriff's department, what you would see is in this, you would see the contract payments we were talking about from Indian Trail, the contract payment from Wesley Chapel, those things, because those are specifically tied to a service. So when you're looking at this, this isn't necessarily something that can be moved around, with the exception of this little piece right here. Ninety-six thousand dollars is unrestricted intergovernmental revenue. But as you kind of go around the wheel, you see the federal grants, and this is primarily in Department of Human Services, your state grants, and that, human services and the sheriff's department make up the vast majority of this. There's also some state aid to local libraries, that kind of stuff that's in there. But it's not, it's not revenue that can be maneuvered around. So right out of the gate, you take out twenty-one percent, and fund balance is not an operating revenue, and I'll, we'll talk about that in a second. So really, again, you're still left with about seventy million of this as being the only revenue that you can impact. And then, of course, your charge for service. So if we were looking at that, charges for service, where do those come in? Well, you see growth management is thirty-one percent and human services is thirty-nine, so that makes up about seventy percent of your charges for service. And what we saw in the general assembly this last year was a bill that required kind of the fees from growth management and planning and all, and building inspections should remain in that area to provide for that service. It didn't go as far as to specify it should be like a utility, so we don't treat it like a utility because it's a general government and in our opinion, in a lot of times, a public safety function. But it need, they need to approximate. So when we look at our net takers table, growth management is real close to supporting itself. It takes just a little bit of subsidy or maybe gives back maybe ten thousand dollars here or there to support itself. So we're in compliance from that perspective. Human services, generally, when you look at human services revenue, that's things like their dental clinic, any fees that they take for the services they provide, they charge dribs and drabs of different kinds of fees. And all that money generally then piles back into human services to provide that service. Sheriff's Office, there's a little bit of fee for service permits and whatnot, the registered deeds, those are your, your recording fees, those kinds of things, your community partners, trying to remember exactly what that is, it's very small. I want, I want to say that has to do with the drug court maybe, maybe grant revenue. I'd have to go back and look. The community services is always a discussion, discussion point, because these are the services you charge for like libraries, Ken Creek Park, those other things. And this is a small part of what they're provided in their budget. So those fees, you can't raise, you know, everybody says, we'll just raise the rates on those services because they're voluntary. You can't raise the fees enough at Ken Creek to fully fund Ken Creek's operation. It's a good, public good, community asset that you have. And the same goes for pretty much everywhere in that community services figure area. This is rental fees at the ag center, those kinds of things. And then emergency services, keep it in mind, in emergency services, because we've broken out EMS, we've broken out fire and all those other things, those are in their own funds. Other revenues, as I mentioned, we have investments and fund balances used for capital projects. These are the other funds we have. And keep it in mind, funds are an accounting structure that allow us then to segregate money and keep it separated for a specific purpose. So these are all the other funds we have that we use to fund different specific purposes. So you see first, the school budgetary fund. This funds primarily are pretty much always supported through ad valorem taxes and interest earnings and fund balance from previous ad valorem, and that goes directly to schools. And, you know, you always hear this concept of a true up or we want to share in the benefit because we were bound by state law to, by general statute to only estimate a certain collection percentage. Any overage from your school's tax will be applied back, when we recommend the budget, to one-time costs within the schools, just like we did with the fire departments, just like we do with the general fund. So all that- So all that money stays there. You have the school's radio budgetary fund, this is a partnership with the schools to provide the 400-megahertz radio system that was new and installed on all of the school buses this year, which I believe is working just fine, I haven't heard any complaints about it, to ensure, you know, because it was a safety issue, we wanted to be sure we got the lowest cost for the schools. We did that, and they pay us $167,000 annually to support that program, payback, because we cash-fronted the purchase and acquisition of that system. And then we use the 167 payback, or the 167,000 revenue to provide for the radio tech and provide for the maintenance on the system. So, they get a fully functioning system that's integrated into our county-wide system, public safety systems. The fire budgetary fund, which we were just kind of talking about, those funding sources. You have the fire budgetary fund, which is the main fund, and then each of the tax districts has its own fund, so you can actually look at our financial statements, Commissioner, to your point earlier, any funding that we collect above our estimates and what's paid out to them and appropriated by you, then is, you can see it in our CAFR, and the way that we do it is we take that money from our financial statements and apply it back to their capital. EMS budgetary fund is supported through, again, through the adverum tax, we broke that out, I think Commissioner Simpson, you made that motion at the last second last year, to separate fire and EMS. And you see about two, I want to say 2.8 cents in that neighborhood for EMS, and that's, EMS is supported then through adverum taxes, the Medicaid service charges revenues that they receive, and then other revenues primarily consisting of investment income. Water and sewer fund, the water and sewer fund's supported almost 99% through user charges, the remainder is funded through investment income and other revenues. They have sale of assets, because they use trucks, they use equipment, and we sell those every year when they reach their life, and then also they have investment income. So, the point in showing you kind of these things is to demonstrate that all of these funding sources are kind of kept segregated. So each of them gets their own investments, their own investment income back, each of them gets whatever overage in the fund or shortage in the fund is there each year. So they're almost a set of self-balancing, if you will, self-balancing books, separate and above the general fund. Solid waste fund is 91.8, or 91.6% funded through user charges, the 7.4 is scrap tire disposal tax, white good disposal tax, and solid waste disposal tax. So when you're looking at the fund summaries that are in the budget document, when it comes to you hopefully next week, what you would see is some taxes in the solid waste, well, those are the taxes that are there. We don't charge adverum, we don't share adverum taxes with solid waste fund, and we don't subsidize the solid waste fund. You have what are called internal service funds, these are optional, but they make good accounting sense for a county our size, and what this allows is, allows us to charge user departments based on usage. So, the first one there is IT. What we do is we say, okay, you take the total cost of the operating of the countywide information technology, except for programs that are specific to specific users, your base model computer is then allocated based on per computer charge. And that would include your replacement of your computer, plus maintenance and service and internet connection and all those pieces. And then if you're like, our finances is a big user, what's called MUNIS, which is our financial system, ERP system, then everyone that touches MUNIS or uses MUNIS on a daily basis shares the cost of MUNIS. And this is spread through all of these other funds up here, so, not EMS, but for instance, school, or not, not schools, but water and sewer fund, solid waste fund, if they have a computer that's provided by the county, they pay an IT charge. Fleet's done, if you have a vehicle, it's based on your vehicle and the estimated maintenance of that. If you have health, well, any employees, it'd be health insurance, risk management, because we allocate out the cost of risk management across all the funds. The other one is facilities, and if you were to look, school's budgetary fund actually has a facilities charge in it. Most of you probably do realize, we maintain the administration building, we actually provide cleaning services and everything in that facility, so that's their allocation.
As well as the old post office.
As well as the old post office. Yep. So, these are internal, general statute doesn't require that you have these, but for a county our size and the complexity of our operation, it makes sense to be able to plan this way. So we opted for an internal service fund model, it grosses up the budget a little bit, because you get the coming and going charges on both sides of the house, but it helps us then plan long-term for IT replacement, fleet management, and those kinds of things. Plus, it gives the department directors a little bit of responsibility in how they use those services. If we were to just fund them, for instance, if we were just to fund all of those funds out of the general fund and say, this is the cost of IT, then when we do new positions or we, they want to make a change or buy an upgraded computer, then we, what we would have to do, then, they wouldn't necessarily have to be responsible in that. So we allow them, the ability or flexibility to do that, but they have to be responsible for identifying that in their budget, not through the central funds. Then you have other funds supported through revenues, these are specific, the revenue coming through these are required for specific purposes, for instance, 911 funds. You have the automation enhancement fund, you guys set that up last year, it's where the budget will be set up in compliance with your direction on that last year. So, these funds then are supported through different things, E911s through the phone, cell phone tax, and the enhancement fund is through the transfers, part of the transfers fee, so.
Or the registered deeds.
The registered deeds, sorry. And she uses that money then to do preservation projects. And 911 funds, have to go to 911 board, it's a complicated process, but it's used to fund consoles, connections, and things for the 911 center downstairs. So, on revenue, other, I know it kind of went through, I'm trying to mindful your time, we have about 15 minutes. Is there any questions on revenue? This is a step back, real high-level view, we'll spend most of our time next Monday on expenditure side, but this is kind of our sources of revenue that we get. And again, through all of these, these funds, these funds specifically are self-supporting. So, do you have a question? Okay. Okay. So, without getting into too much detail on the revenue or on the expenditure side, because we're not quite ready to finalize that, this is where we are right now. This pie, if you added it all up, does not add to 100 because of interdepartmental charges, I'll talk about that in just a second. You have employee compensation and employee benefits, this is general fund only. So this excludes, at this point excludes your fire funding, excludes EMS funding, and excludes school funding. Which for a long time, if you were to look at this pie, this contracts and subsidies number would be, I think when I ran it the first time, it was 110 million, if you load, if you load all those in, depending upon what we do at schools, if you just ran it on 16, on 16's budget, that number's over $110 million. Well, this has kind of purely been county operations. For county, controlling county managed services, not that we contract for through EMS or through fire, or that we provide current expense funding directly out to the schools through the subsidy. So you see employee compensation's about 26%, employee benefits is about just under 16. And that's generally normal, in fact, that's about 41%. I've seen most of the time, it averages between 50 and 60% in a personnel-heavy organization. And keep it in mind, government is personnel-intensive. It's, if you take out those subsidies and all those other things that we do to outside groups, the pure operation of government without money we give out, to give out, is really personnel-intensive. And you'll see that on this wheel, because, I'll jump down here, 45, 45 million for debt service, almost 27%, that's a fairly significant chunk. I think our policy says it really should only be about 20%. So we're still working down, if you would have looked at this a number of years ago, it was even higher. But, this is all related, about 40, let's say 41, 42 million related to schools, the remainder related to SPCC, remainder to the ag center, and the courts building, I believe. So, other budgetary accounts, these are fees and different things, interfund transfers, that's the transfer to capital, which I'll talk about in just a couple of minutes. Interdepartmental charges, the, this is where we charge all those other funds that we just talked about, they share their cost of my time, Jeff's time, Cindy's time, so this is what's referred to as a cost allocation. We don't, we're not an internal service fund, we don't set county administration up as an internal service fund, but this interdepartmental charge approximates the amount of time that all of our central admin services and all of those centralized functions serve those other funds, so that when I consult or work with Ed, or we do the rate model with Ed, or we spend our budgetary time working with the enterprise fund, the enterprise fund does, shares its weight in that, the taxpayer's not asked to carry the cost for the enterprise. So that's where that interdepartmental charge, and it goes in as a negative on the expenditure line, because it's a reimbursement. Capital outlay, this is not, things that you buy through the year, vehicles, furniture, equipment that is capitalizable, but is not, doesn't rise to the level of being a capital project. And then operating costs, this is, this is the big bucket, that's everything you do from supplies to professional services to, this is where your internal service charges would be, these are just the operating costs that are not, that are not these other categories. I think that pretty much covers in detail. And again, this, this is general fund only, so the vast majority, this will kind of give you an idea of where that money is spent. You can see our two big departments, human services is our largest department in the county, at 376, the sheriff's office, second at 305. Remember, we looked at, we'll look at in just a second FTE charge, which kind of shows you how that's changed over time. Then you can kind of just work your way around the wheel. General county administration, that's not Cindy's office, she doesn't have 70 people working specifically directly under her. What this includes is human resources, the tax office, legal, all the smaller general administration departments that we lump together into one group for general county administration. Emergency services, again, this is all funds, so this includes all of your 911 operators, your fire marshal, all of Curtis's group, these are grouped around our service areas. Community partners, Cindy always asks me, what's the one person we have in community partners? That's your drug court person. Remember, we, the state, was it two years ago, last year maybe?
Couple of years ago, they quit funding, they were using their foundation funds to supply the program, those were pretty much expended, and two plus years ago, the board made the decision to fund that activity, because that is an option to keep people out of our, from incarceration.
Right. And it saves a lot of money on the other side. There's two things you as a board have done over the last few years that are excellent to keep costs out of jail. You've added two assistant district attorneys, and then you, are you funded two assistant district attorneys, and then you've done this drug court program, and that's been immensely successful in diversion. And, you don't see the district attorneys on here, because they're not our staff, these are our people we pay, they are in that community, contracts, grants, and subsidies piece, we contract with the ADA, or the DA to give him the funds to do it, and he hires the ADAs. Board of Elections, and this number fluctuates, given, depending upon the year, because of elections, they sometimes have to staff up part-time, and these are in FTE, I forgot to point that out, I'm sorry, FTE are full-time equivalent, so for every 2,080 hours, that's one FTE. So this could be part-time, permanent part-time, temporary part-time, or full-time. This is just a consistent way to measure staffing. Administrative Services, that's my shop, that's IT, procurement, accounting, and budget. I can tell you probably about, it's about a third, a third, and a third between those three functions. The registered deeds, then down here, and then Public Works is your third-largest department out of your group. But you can see the two biggest pieces of pie, and again, community service primarily, it's probably 50-50 funded through state and federal revenue, and then local revenue sources. So what does that look like? When we talk about FTE, where have we been? And we like to go back to 2008, you've seen this on our index table, but I just want to kind of talk about it again real quick. We try to go back to 2008, because if you were to snapshot 10, 11, and 12 in that timeframe, you're looking at an economic downturn. The county, because of its debt portfolio, was jettisoning positions to make debt payments, which is, under the general statute, the first thing you have to make out of your tax rate is your debt payment. So the LGC says, above all else, debt. And so, to try to keep the tax rate where it was, the board at that time, you can see, floated down, you were at about 800 total FTE at that time, floated you all the way down to a low of 297. So you're looking at 102 position reduction by 2012 in FTE. And, that was fine at that time, because you saw a downturn in the real estate market, so you didn't need as many inspectors, you saw, I think John Shop and Tax lost appraisers, we just did a lot of different things, I think they cut some out of administrative services, from accounting, finance support functions and so forth.
I would say the majority of the departments lost positions.
And this, that process, what they did to try to keep as much of the service on the front line as possible, they went through the organization and kind of wiped out the middle management. So, in a lot of organizations, in a lot of departments, what you see is, you have a director or division director, then you have a lot of frontline folks, which isn't necessarily in itself bad, but for the long-term for succession planning and kind of what you do when those people retire from the division director, there's not a lot of middle in this organization. It's, that makes it just real flat, you have wide spans of control and very little middle management. So when we added back, and I think it's important to note, if you were to look at the sheriff's office, we strategically added back, based on the priority being public safety of the board, you can see we've gone from 242 in 2008, sheriff was never cut through that process, to what we'll be proposing probably in 2017, is about 305. So during that window, if you were to compare 2008 to 2017, not, the countywide non-sheriff office FTE, will have only grown by about four and a half positions, or about half a percent, 0.6%, which is, kind of goes along with this board's direction, I think, when you guys sat down in 20, was it 2010, did the major plan of work, and you outlined the priorities.
2011.
Was it 2011? Just a little before my time. You outlined public safety being the number one thing, well, your budget has bore that out. As you've gone through time, where have you seen the most growth? And if you were to take expenditures, they would kind of line up the same way, you've seen the growth in your sheriff's office and providing sheriff's deputies, you haven't necessarily seen it across the general government. And I will say, because I know this will be the question, one of the questions, this doesn't adjust out contract to full-time, or full-time to contract conversions, because they kind of wash, where you've had Public Works converted some of its wastewater operations to contract employees, you also have the human services, because BNC Fast and all the things going on over there, we've converted the other way. So they kind of net themselves out, so trying to net individual pieces out like that would kind of, to get it exactly right is near impossible, so we just kind of look at it on a total gross basis, because those kind of wash out.
Jeff, you're showing 25, 6, 7 maybe positions from 15 to 16, and you're, oh, it's 50 positions up in 2017.
Most of them are in human services and social services, with the change in state law and federal money where we can't.
So that'd be the contract employees.
A lot of the contract employees, and we're adding staff in areas, Medicaid eligibility and that, where we are not meeting the federal guidelines.
But the cost of that is not completely borne by the county.
No, it's 50-50, in some cases 70-80.
I can tell you real quick on that, from the close to 50 going in between, because Cindy had a long conversation about this when I put this table together. First of all, look down here, 95 to 305, so 10 of the 50 are going to the sheriff's department.
Oh, so that's accounted in the.
Yeah, the, these are cumulative, so they're the brown bar. So 10 of the 50 going to the sheriff, 31, 32, close to 32 are going into human services. So 42 of the 50 are going to those areas. I can tell you, two of those positions, one's an accountant in our shop, because of the motor vehicle tax change, the accounting for it's become a lot more difficult, and we have to balance those out with all the tax, tax rates we have and different things administratively, we need some help, plus CDVG, and doing some grant management and those kinds of things. Part of that's supported through the CDVG fund, part of that'll be supported through the, through the general fund. And then one position in IT for AV tech, because right now we have no one managing any of our audiovisual stuff, and judges get kind of temperamental when the AV stuff in their building doesn't work right, and I think we've been told by several judges, fix it or suffer, and that would be Cindy, so.
And we, in tax administration, the builder's bill that passed last year, we are having to put on a full-time person just to keep track of all building inventory, because the come and go, and the sale, and the new, and it is, it is a rather, you know, it's an administrative burden.
I think a couple of those are probably Public Works, there's, we'll go into a real fine, a real granular level next week, but that's kind of where they are, the vast majority are in human services and sheriff's department. Again, sticking with the theme, frontline services, which I think is always our goal, is to provide frontline services. Almost all the positions we put in, I don't think we added any middle management folks, they're all frontline people doing specific tasks, not management folks.
Jeffy, did you look at the, we've had a lot of population growth, and a lot of the services that you provide are directly tied to that population growth, have you looked at that?
I believe when we looked, when we were looking at the fire information, from 2006 to now, our population's grown, I want to say like 60%, I think that that was the number that you gave when we were looking at the fire contract discussion. So yeah, over this window, your population has grown maybe half again, while your staffing again's grown half a percent, so.
That's cool.
Yeah, you're keeping up, I would argue you're way more efficient, and that's what our index tells us, is we're providing about 105% with the, our stress level on our FTE, or FTE stress index. a hundred and five percent with the, our stress level on our FTE, our FTE stress index. So I think this growth across the window is not huge, given where you're at and where you're going and the population is. I'm mindful of my time.
Jeff, you've got ten minutes.
Yep. I want to leave you some time on your firing range issue. So real quick on the capital funding. And this kind of comes back to what you were talking about earlier, Commissioner. We, we employ a Pago strategy generally for capital funding. And this is because, a couple of reasons. In North Carolina, to do, you have, you only have a couple of avenues for debt. You could do secured debt, which is some kind of certificate of participation or some kind of instrument that uses the asset to secure the debt. And we've done that on some schools. It's a way to do it without voter approval. There's two-thirds debt, which allows you to recycle two-thirds of the GO bonds. Again, not having to go back to the voter. But you as a board in the past told us, we really don't want to use any new debt that's not voter-elected. So our capital program at this point for twenty-seventeen doesn't include any new debt. What it does allow us to use is a mix of fund balance and current revenues to fund these projects. What we do is we take any overage from the prior year, working back towards your policy, and we say, if we can, if above our policy level, how much money do we have? Let's use that to fund one-time capital costs. And that's in accordance with the fund balance policy that you've adopted. And we sit down and look at them. So if you were to look, you have, one of the things we're recommending, we'll be recommending is the Ag Center sign, and that's to help them bring in folks, and that'll be on, it's a sign that'll be hopefully on the street. I think they're still working with Monroe to kind of determine how that'll work out. Library RFID program, this allows them to keep track of their books and check out faster. So that's direct service. The library carbo replacement over at the main library. Parks paving projects, this is to fix potholes at the different parks facilities. The sheriff's office space analysis, one of the things we recognize is the sheriff's service, you saw the growth. They're busting at the seams, and the sheriff's talked about needing a new jail. Well, the approach we, in consultation with the sheriff, are recommending is to do a space needs analysis to determine how, how and where that space should be.
On the administrative side.
Right.
Because he wanted to do, when we met with him, he wanted to do renovations. And I said renovations is not going to net you any square footage. And they're pretty packed in there right now. So he said, let's, let's separate the administrative piece from the correctional piece, and let's do an analysis of what your needs are. So this is a needs analysis to try and have a better handle as to how to accommodate their personnel.
And I would anticipate that if you did a bond election in the future for a sheriff's administrative office or a combined administrative office jail project, that this space study provides the basis for what that should be and kind of hopefully projects some growth and kind of talk about what the needs will be. Tax office offer, this is a big one that we had flipped from tax notes, which are a short-term funding, a funding option on debt. Well, instead of having that funding option saving us probably about a million dollars a year on a cash flow basis, we can just fund that outright. The tax office right now is going through the process of reviewing the RFPs with the anticipation of contracting. This could be, probably two point four is the high end. It could be as low as a million. If it's a million dollars, then we'll, this money will go back in the pool to fund other capital projects later. And we'll reallocate that. Of course, you as a board have to approve that. Then from SPCC down, all these marked SPCC are part of their funding requests that they made to us this year. They had a catch-up, big catch-up on IT technologies who are funding their two-year technology program to allow them to get going on it and be able to do it over a shorter period of time. HVAC and security enhancements, resurfacing their parking lot, this is the project that they lost in lieu of the welding lab last year. And then you have parking at the occupational house center.
Why is that, why is that not allocated in with education? Can it not be?
We've always kept SPCC and, and the USP, UCPS separate.
Might not be a bad idea, especially since you have a big portion of Union County folks. It was, you know, early colleges at the campus.
I would just say, I would just, mine was on the stand.
Anything like that?
No, because we did have a merge, and it, it got a little murky. So we kind of have split them apart from, for that purpose. So it's purely K through twelve versus the other.
When you look in the CAFR.
Between the early colleges, K through twelve.
The early colleges, high school. When you look on your CAFR, and it shows what we spent on education, they are lumped together from the state's perspective. But as Cindy mentioned, school, UCPS isn't real happy when we lump this in together and say, look what we're spending on education, because you could from a tech, you could from one perspective say, this is what we spent on education.
We're running on time, so we'll get you down.
So, facility renewal, we tried to put back a hundred and twenty-five thousand for boilers and different projects. There's a specific list that we get every year. And then community services renewal, this is above and beyond, I think, a lot of the things they're going to look at this year. A new dock out at Cairn Creek, just different things they can do, that they need to do maintenance-wise. So this, instead of kind of taking that list and making it go up and down every year, we say, here's your set bucket of funding, plan, plan that accordingly. And that's paid for all, the, the two fifty comes from current revenue from this point up is funded through fund balance. And that's an appropriate way to use your fund balance to try to reduce your ongoing maintenance costs, because we didn't, we wouldn't want to raise the tax rate sufficiently to cover five point three million, because that's roughly two pennies. So what we're doing are close to two and a half. So what we're doing is we're using our fund balance to keep the tax rate low while providing for the capital needs in these areas. And again, this doesn't include any new debt. You'll see some bond stuff out in the future, but that's just for placeholder planning purposes, recognizing when we get there, you'll have to appropriate it. So with that, I have just a few minutes, not very long. If there's any questions, comments, any additional direction, anything that you guys see from there that you, that you want us to, or specific things you wanted from us. With that, keep in mind, we'll do a real detailed walk-through next Monday.
So we'll be able to come back to some of this direction of things next Monday.
Absolutely. We'll lay out specifically where all the operating funding is going. I won't spend too much time on revenue, because that's not really the.
Well, there's some things we've talked about throughout the year, like the shelter that they came and asked for money. You know, I guess the question would be if that's accounted for in any of what we're doing.
It's not because we haven't received direction from you.
Okay. That's what you're going to look for next time.
Right. This time, next time.
If you, if you want to now, gives us a chance to put it in. We can, the books are still open to make tweaks, because we have a little bit of change obviously to make with the fire department. So if you have something you want us to add, there's consensus that do the shelter funding, then you need to just let us know that.
They were asking for fifty thousand over the next three years.
A year.
A year, for the next three years. Anybody have a problem with that? Or I, I think it was a completely reasonable request, for what they're going to do. I mean, whether that can come from human services or where that can come from, I don't know. But I would say plug that in somewhere, maybe any disagreement with that? Or I think fifty is low. I think we ought to be able to do a little more.
I, I actually would recommend we do, well, they asked for fifty year, for three years, or we could do one hundred and fifty in one fatal swoop. And I, I think within the budget, we could, we could accommodate the one fifty issue.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. State, because it's a really a one-time thing. If you want to do more than one hundred and fifty, that's, you just need to tell us that. So, and it would just be added to that capital list at this point.
Do you need a motion, or you just need to head it on?
Do you want to do more than one fifty?
No. Well, I mean, I'll leave that at that.
I just need some direction. So if it's.
I'd say put it in one year, one fifty, one year.
One fifty in one year.
Any discussion?
Now, like, like I said, I think, I think the service they provide warrants even more than one fifty.
And there's always.
Affordability such that we can help them a little more, I think we should.
And there's an opportunity that we could do that next year or the next year if we needed to, because this is a multi-year project, but giving them the one fifty upfront, I think shows a commitment that we're going to keep that. Doesn't tie to having future boards to do the fifty thousand. So, all those in favor of doing the one fifties out?
Out.
Any opposed?
No. Be sure we had that. So I'll give you back two minutes.
So the last item that we have is, I said at your last board meeting, we had the firing range project. What we are asking the board is, for action is grant authorization to the county manager to re-advertise and solicit bids for construction of the Union County Firing Range Project. Board is aware of the situation we are in with the prior awarded firm, and we are asking for this so that we can get this back out on the street.
Motion to rebid. This motion was requested on the general track.
It is.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. We're going to adjourn, or we're going to recess, or how, we do this, we're going on to the next.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, none?